Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome, everybody in the audience, to our February 24th School Board Study Session. First on the agenda is the public forum. This is a 15-minute period of time set aside to receive input. Tonight, we have five speakers. I'll call you up one at a time. First will be Doug DeVore.
I get three minutes, right?
Yes.
Where's the clock where I can watch?
Uh, it'll be right behind you.
Okay, three, two, one, go.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm here to represent Brooke Zahn. Brooke Zahn did absolutely nothing wrong. She has freedom of speech, just like everybody in this room has freedom of speech. It doesn't go one way for one party and one way for the other. It's freedom of speech for all, for all, regardless. That mine that she posted was common knowledge. Been out there for months, if you've paid attention. People do pay attention that care. Our leaders care. I brought in tonight the Gettysburg Address. You can go one of two ways, people. You can live your life from fear, or you can live your life from faith. You get to choose. Our country was founded on a principle, on an idea. It was founded with faith. Faith in God, that if we do the right thing and we follow the rules, we got equal justice for all. Anyone who has ever been to any of those battlefields, if you've been to Fredericksburg, Antietam, Bunker Hill, or Gangesburg, you will realize the sacrifices that those men made so that you and I can have the freedom of speech. We need to honor their sacrifice. It needs to go both ways. I'm not a highly educated person, but I've been around a lot of highly educated people. There's one thing that I know how to do. I know how to tell the truth the way I see it, because when you don't tell the truth, you will suffer and you will repeat history again. You will. I don't care how much education you have. I know people that have had the intelligence educated out of them. I'm a simple farm boy. I'm a grit, but you know what? I'm proud of it. Because you know where I put my faith? I put my faith in God. Abraham Lincoln. Let me read you this. You guys are calling for a civil war. Everybody over there, "We're gonna do this, we're gonna riot in the streets." You go right ahead, but you remember one thing. You remember the words of Abraham Lincoln. It says, "Now we are engaged in a great civil war, testing whether that nation or any nation so conceived and so dedicated can long endure. We're men on a great battlefield. We've come to dedicate a portion of that field as the final resting place for those here who gave their lives that that nation might live. It is altogether fitting and proper that we do so. But in a larger sense, we cannot dedicate, we cannot consecrate, we cannot hallow this ground. The brave men, living and dead, who struggle here, have consecrated far above our poor power to add or detract. The world will little note, little note, nor long remember what we say here." How prophetic was that? "But they will never forget what they did here. It is for us, the living, rather, to be dedicated here to the unfinished work." We've got work to do, people. We've got work to do. This is an experiment. We're only 250 years into it. We've got more time. We've got to start loving rather than fearing. We've got to start having faith rather than turning on people that we disagree with. I go to a Walmart, I can see bumper stickers. I don't agree with the bumper sticker, but I'm not taking an axe and ruining their car. You trashed her reputation. She has a right. She has a right to her career. She doesn't trash anybody. I know her personally. But anyway, it is rather for us to be here to dedicate this great task remaining before us, that these honored dead, that we take increased devotion to that cause for which they have given their fullest measure of devotion, that we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, under God, not under Donald Trump, not under Joe Biden, not under a Democrat or a Republican, under God, under God. There's still a God, still in control. In my book, he is. I've had as many triumphs and tragedies as anybody in this room, but you know who I turn to? God. Let me finish last. That this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom. That makes me stand up and cheer. A new birth of freedom. We got a chance. And that the government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from their earth. It's up to us, every one of us. We've all got the same opportunity. Start living it. Start treating your neighbor with respect and love. Don't go after them because you disagree with them. I disagree with a lot of people. That don't give me no right to trash them. And it don't give anybody in this room right to trash them either. Think what Lincoln had to go through. He said that he was willing to be assassinated. He was willing to be assassinated if that meant freedom for the country. My shirt, what does it say? Our lives, our freedom, and our sacred honor. Let's start in the evening. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. And we all need to go to God for his blessings, because without them, we're all done. We're done.
All right, next on the agenda is Tom, is it Sean?
First of all, thanks for having me. I haven't been political ever in my life. I've never voted. About Trump, David. My daughter today is eight years old. When she was four and a half, she came home with a book from the Glendale School. I decided to read it first. I was immediately set on fire. My daughter's the only reason I care to be living. In that book, it talked about dealing with your problems by committing suicide. This is almost four years ago. I haven't heard a single peep from any teacher or anybody in this school. Not one. I'm set on fire for one reason, it's my daughter. And I'm gonna do everything in my power to protect her. If that means I gotta read every book that she brings home, I'm gonna do it. Now, I went to the school the very next morning, and for some reason, that school is open. I went into the principal's office. Probably shouldn't have been there. I sat down, and the principal walks in. She's scared. I look like this. But I'm not scared of nothing anymore. Because like he said, get rid of your fear, and you might be able to see what's in front of you. When I read that book, and I ended up talking to the principal, she fought me on every bit of it. Told her she'll never get that book back. She told me, "It's 20 bucks. Charge me." I had no problem paying that 20 dollars, but that book's never coming back into school. My main problem is, is you know I ordered this book, or you know my daughter rented this book out of the library. It's all tracked. I don't know who any of you are here. Some of you know me in the background, but I can't use my real name, because I get banned from everywhere. Freedom of speech. I've lost my freedom of my speech. And I'm on fire. I'm pissed off. So the last two years, I talked to my daughter's teachers. They know nothing of this. They only want to praise me and my daughter on how good she is. She's my golden child. Don't step on my daughter. Don't feed them this crap that's coming out of these libraries. How they get there, I know how they get there, because I followed that rabbit. Now, I've lost my family, my friends. I'm getting divorced because of what I believe. I was told to stop talking. I was told to stop putting my word out. I'm not afraid. And I'm not afraid to lose everything I have in order to protect my daughter. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rick Storey.
Hi, Board Superintendent. I'll take a more of a seat here. So, as I understand it, four days from now, there is a deadline of whether a lawsuit will be filed against PLSAS or not. And I'm assuming that the people on this table, these tables, will have a pretty good insight as to what happens. Now, I know you guys have been spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to cut budgets, deal with, you know, unfunded mandates, et cetera, et cetera. And staring at a lawsuit is not much fun, but I thought I would just try to get everyone to understand what's gonna happen next if the board does not follow the requests of Brooke Zahn. Number one is, so you're going to federal court. Obviously, whoever you're gonna retain as an attorney probably does not have the experience in federal court, so you're gonna have to get another set of attorneys, probably multiple attorneys. So now, typical federal judge, attorney's gonna run you $350 to $500 per hour, on top of that, all the legal expenses that go with that. Now, what'll happen is you're gonna go into discovery. So now, she is gonna be presenting all of her discovery information, and she's gonna request discovery from everyone from the school district. What does that mean? Phones, emails, any other correspondence is gonna come to light and all this. Next thing will happen is that you're gonna get deposed. So, any information that's out there, from a teacher, that was a political statement, is gonna come to light. All of you, all the administrators, are gonna be deposed as well. You're gonna be sitting in front of attorneys, under oath, telling what you know. The cell phones are going to be requested for information on that. And you'll be recorded, typically on a Zoom call. After that, what'll happen is that somebody's gonna make a motion to dismiss. And so, you're gonna go in front of a hearing in front of a judge. And what'll happen at that point is, the motion's gonna be denied. And the judge is gonna say, "You know what? You guys have to go through ADR, Alternative Dispute Resolution." And so, the attorneys are gonna come together, and they're gonna try to figure out how to make this thing go away, because the judge is gonna say this should not go to trial. And so, now what'll happen is that you're probably, at this point, hundreds of thousands dollars into legal expenses. You've taken and you have ripped apart everybody on staff here, because they've all gone through the emotional roller coaster of this. And at some point, the attorney's gonna say, "Ah, you know what? We're gonna settle. We're gonna give her this much, and she's gonna give up this." You have four days to avoid doing that. There is a time when you want to die on that mountain, and there's a time when you don't want to even attempt climbing it. I would encourage the board and anyone that's in the decision-making process here, is don't go into this battle. No matter what, you are not going to win. You're gonna spend money we do not have. That money could be used for the kids. You're already cutting the budget. You don't need to go and, you don't need to do this. The only ones that are gonna win is gonna be those attorneys. That's it. If I plead with the board to do the right thing, eat some humble pie, whether you think you're right or wrong, it doesn't matter. It's a no-win situation. Thank you for listening.
Next speaker is Mike Von Arx.
Good evening. My name is Mike Von Arx. I've been a resident in Prior Lake since 1989. I'm curious, do we censure everyone that sees political posts or just employees that make conservative posts? I went online before I came here, and there was still a man named John Bezek, I guess, that's a high school principal, that posted a picture of himself behind a Biden and Harris sign. Is that legal? Because, well, it's clearly legal, it's freedom of speech. He can feel any way and every way he wants. And I would stand behind his decision to say whatever he wants, in spite of whether or not I disagree. That's his right. That's his right. Mrs. Zahn had the same right. She has a right to freedom of speech, period. Sometimes, you don't like what you hear, and trust me, I've listened to the liberal left for 50 years. They've gotten everything they wanted for 50 years. I didn't agree with any of it, but I didn't ban anybody, and I didn't fire anybody, and I didn't castigate them. I didn't even name-call, and I didn't scratch bad words into their cars. I took it, because sometimes, when freedom of speech happens, you have to listen to things you don't like. On a sidebar issue, I'm told 50% of the kids in our high school, at the senior high level, don't operate at grade level. I'm a taxpayer. The largest portion of my tax bill goes to finance this high school, and I see a 50% failure rate as an abject failure. Anybody on this board that doesn't improve on that ought to resign right now. Terrible performance. I was an electrician for 40 years. If I came out to your house, and after I got done and sent the bill, and only half of your lights and half of your outlets worked, would you pay the bill? I don't think so. If I was a plumber and half of your toilets didn't work, would you pay the bill? I don't think so. Our society demands better than a 50% failure rate, and I demand better from you. Is that understood? I hope so. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Zach Lean.
Hey, everybody, I'm Zach. I'm just kinda here to close out and just say, like, hey, there's probably a reasonable way to get through this thing, and it already kinda looks bad. Like, I have little interaction with the school district, but I live very close to it. Well, I think about it often. I grew up in this school district. I've got four children, two of which are here. I don't think we need to have all this conversation necessarily about, well, my worldview versus your worldview. I think we all agree on some core issues. Free speech obviously should be one of those. And I would just urge you to think retrospectively how we got here briefly, and then be like, okay, how can we resolve this and make it look okay again? Because it looks really bad right now. And then, I think that you guys can come up with a good way to move forward. I know Brooke personally. She's a good person. I would be honored for her to be teaching my children. I hope that you guys can find somebody to follow. Let's make nice, let's move forward with positive direction in the school district. And thanks for allowing us to speak. Really appreciate it.
Thank you to all the speakers. Appreciate your input. Moving on to the purpose and agenda, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board of Directors. Tonight, our study session, we've got several key items that we'll be discussing. We have a proclamation of social workers. We will have a summary statement for the closed session for evaluation. Talk a little bit about the upcoming election date for board vacancy. Also, discussing some protocol and process for updating, or I should say, maybe creating a handbook, modeling after the MSBA handbook. Also, discussion about the board's process to revise 200 series policies. Those are the policies that govern your interactions with one another. And then, lastly, go into the conversation around budget reductions as well. And that will take us through the evening. Chair White.
All right, thank you. First on list is the proclamation for National School Social Worker Week. Director Johnson, would you please read the proclamation?
School Social Workers Appreciation Week, March 3rd through 7th, 2025. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes March 3rd through 7th, 2025, as School Social Workers Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas, the importance of school social work through the inclusion of school social work programs and services has been recognized in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Whereas, school social workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success, including disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, mental illness, homelessness, bullying, familial stressors, and other barriers to learning. Whereas, school social workers are needed now more than ever than any time in recent memory. Whereas, school social workers maintain knowledge of school culture and school climate. Whereas, school social workers serve as vital members of a school's education team, playing a central role in creating partnerships between the home, school, and community to ensure the student's success. Therefore, the PLSAS Board of Education does hereby proclaim the week of March 3rd through 7th, 2025, as School Social Workers Week, in recognition of the contributions school social workers make in the lives of students.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Good evening, Chair White, Dr. Thomas, and the board. I am here to thank you for reading that proclamation and recognizing our social workers. They really do play a vital role in connecting community, home, and school together. They support students, the overall school climate. They are honestly ready to jump in wherever and whenever they're needed. So, we are lucky to have 12 of the best here in PLSAS, and I am grateful every day for the support they bring, and I'm looking forward to giving them a little extra attention next week, so thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I'll read a superintendent mid-year evaluation summary. On February 10th, the Prior Lake Savage Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Michael Thomas conducted a closed session for the purpose of a mid-year review of the superintendent's goals. Board feedback was received, and Dr. Thomas was given the opportunity to comment, ask questions, and gain clarity. Additional feedback was received by Dr. Thomas, and on February 17th, the chair and superintendent met to review feedback and signed the mid-year review summary. Next, I would like the board to discuss a date to finish out the term which I am currently serving, and give Martha the direction she needs. We're ahead of the curve here. I'm just, I'd like to get this action put in motion so that when the time comes, we're just ready to make the necessary arrangements, and then we will take a physical action at a later regular meeting. So, Bernie. Director Johnson. Happy to go with a November date. That's all. Anybody else?
I agree.
We're down to two, I think.
November.
We're down to just two dates, and November would be the obvious one for, mostly for cost reasons. If we can share part of the number of precincts in Prior Lake or Savage, if they have something in the ballot, it just makes a little sense. So, if everybody's in agreement, we'll call for November, and it'll come to the board at a regular meeting. Yes.
Would it be okay to explain for members of the public why we're looking at this now? I know this, but I think, you know, just the way it's written in our agenda, I think, might be a little confusing, because I had to read it four times, why we're doing this now versus when the term is up. I think it just might be good for...
Well, for me personally, I just wanted to, there were a number of things that I need to get through during study sessions. One of them is the board is tasked with actually setting a special election date to fill the last year of the term which I am currently serving. And there are certain dates that have to be met in order for the district to conduct the election, prepare for it, and that kind of thing. And I just wanted it done now so that administration has plenty of time to make the arrangements. And like I said, the official action to set the date will be at a meeting, probably sometime in the summer.
84 days prior.
84 days prior. We have to be, at least, set the date. So, it's just checking the box to make sure that we didn't get lost. Anyone else?
No, that's good.
All right. We will plan on November, and we'll come back to us, and then debate for action.
Wait, there's just consensus?
Yep. All right, then we'll move on to the school board, or proposed school board handbook. We've had several discussions regarding the creation of a board handbook that could become our standard operating handbook. Martha was kind enough to cobble something together that is a, what I believe is a good template, and I'm just looking for some direction. Does the board want to take this and have, maybe have Martha send it out electronically to everybody, make your comments? Do we want to give it to a member or two to take the ball and go through this? And maybe, if there's some things that a member feels like that are missed, or wanna do some tweaking, we can do it that way. I'm open to suggestions. This is the process question only. This looks like a super good start, and I appreciate the effort Martha put into it. So, any comments?
It'd be easier to just send it out to everybody, and then schedule a time at another school board study session after people have a chance to send in their updates, so we're not starting from scratch.
Okay. So, would it be, anyone else?
No, Chair White, just to clarify, that's the MSBA template that Martha was working out of, correct? Yeah, okay.
So, how about, Martha, if you wouldn't mind sending it out?
I'll do it right now.
We can bring it back March, and that should give us all plenty of time. That's cool there, right? I'll make a note of that.
Chair White, I may just, also, with that template, there were lots of blanks for districts to kind of fill in for what it looks like for you. So, we pre-filled some stuff just for conversations for you all to consider, like, you know, if a question comes up from the media, how should the board handle that? So, we filled in some of those blanks. You all take a look at it. Again, it's just a conversation starter.
Sure.
This is obviously your handbook, but just wanted to let you know some of that was done in advance, just to get your thoughts. Spin.
There is good little. Look forward to that, and get your comments in in time for the, we'll call for the March study session. Moving on to Board of Education 200 policies, revisions, the process question again. We did have some discussion around this at the retreat, and just wondering if there's thoughts about how we would like to tackle this moving forward. We want to have a couple of members take two and work our way through all of them. Do we want to all sit down at a study session in the future and ram it all out at once? Again, give it off to a couple of volunteers who want to take a crack at it, and then we'll get back. I'm open to any suggestions. Policy writing is not my strong suit, so, Director Prince.
Well, first of all, it goes hand in hand also with the handbook, since it has the operating norms and the rules of engagement, as well as the ethics and what the roles are for the individuals. So, I would suggest that we consider those when we give the feedback on the handbook also, and then also do it the same way, so that, you know, the 200 policies also kind of tell a story. And I think they would be a good fit in the handbook themselves and perform concurrently.
Chair White, please.
My suggestion would be for the board to discuss what a goal date is for both finishing the 200s and finishing the handbook. I think setting that date will help us meet it, because otherwise, we can tend to... So, if we're wanting to discuss the handbook in March, you know, I just think it would behoove us to set a goal date to have both the handbook and the 200s completed as a board team.
So, would it be better to have them both come back to the same study session, and you give us an extra, both in April?
Does policy have to be seen, do we have to go through twice, two times for policy for transparency with our community? Or, I mean, I know their board policy, so...
I'm wondering if that's necessary, because they're hours. I'm wondering if that's necessary because they're ours. A future board can change them.
I mean, I agree with you. I think setting some sort of guidelines that let's have this done by a certain date. How we get there, I'm open to hearing. We'll get to these other discussions.
Director Johnson.
I think we should just start fresh. I agree with Director France that it is part of the handbook, but we can work on the handbook and the 200s. Just start fresh with MSBA. I would like Director Bullion and I, since we're already on policy, just to kind of start those, and then MSBA's got 17, if I remember the number correctly, 17 200 series. So we can break those out and just put a deadline of June or July so that we're starting next month, right? We're knocking two or three out every single month, and just move forward. This way, we're already working with Director Herman, and move forward. But we've got a deadline, and everything's done. And then this way, when we're done with the 200s, hey, by that point, we're done with the handbook too. Instead of deadline, we're done, we start fresh. Everything that needs to be input in there, and everyone's still having discussion around the same thing. All we're doing is basically taking anything that, right? We see that immediately needs to get fit, get put in, is done. We send it to Director Herman. She clears it through legal, and we bring it to the study session.
So are you proposing that you two tackle it with input from the rest of the board? Or you want the entire board somehow?
I'm happy to, you know, if somebody has something that they absolutely think needs to be in there, call. I mean, we've all got time. We can communicate. There's nothing saying that we can't.
I like the approach of starting with the MSBA templates and, you know, pulling out maybe some of the critical things we feel because I do think they've probably morphed over many years. I'm not sure, but I do like that approach. I mean, if you guys are willing to take that, I won't comment on that. But I think it's, I think we're going to have to probably take a few policies per study session to try and get through them over a series of, you know, a few sessions just because we have a lot of other business.
Chair White.
Thank you, Charles, for... I would be happy to do that work as suggested, but this is the first time that I'm hearing that suggestion of you and I doing it. And I do also appreciate the fact that other board members will have their opinions to weigh in because policy work is board work, regardless of who's on that committee or not. So that being said, I think it will help if the board kind of shares how they'd like to see those board policies reworked. We do have, you know, we're in policy committee. Now, policy committee doesn't meet every month, such as finance. There's a little bit difference there. Would it be most helpful if we're doing, you know, sending the handbook, sending it out to all board members? Would it be helpful if we set a June goal date to have both things absolutely completed and maybe approved by the board? If we work backwards on that, would it be helpful for us to divvy out the 200s in the months prior? Similar to how we're sending, Martha is sending out the board handbook, and then we'll discuss at a March study session together as a board team? Would it be helpful if we divvy out the board policies, send them to the board, somehow compile? You know, I am not opposed to having an MSBA starting point. There's a lot of history, I'm sure, with our 200s. I think maybe that would be, we would need to have consensus is the board comfortable starting with MSBA model policies?
Yeah, I mean, I personally think it's going to actually make your job easier because like what Director Mason said, these policies have evolved over year after year. But what I like about the MSBA model policies is they already have all the legal language already tied into them. They have all the statutes, so you're not having to add all that. And then you're not having to waste our legal time and money of checking to see are, do our policies currently follow the law when MSBA's due? And so I like that a lot. I actually think it's going to be faster and more efficient to use the MSBA model policies. And then I'm open to, I agree, June would be, I think, a great, we start this new year out fresh. Yeah, I agree with the process that you recommended, so I'll go through it by detail, so.
Yeah, first of all, I don't think we should go into next fiscal year after June 30th with this. The other thing is, is that we have a lot of important work for the district. So by going over all of these at once, we're going to be taking a lot of study session time, and we've got other things on our agenda. So this could be a more of a circuitous process. What's made in, people get an update every so often. Any key points can get discussed at the study session, but it certainly shouldn't take up a whole study session.
I would agree.
So doing it more or less recursively and circuitously through the 30th. And also keep in mind that these policies are not mutually exclusive. And so as we found out, trying to go over one policy, it actually hit three or four. So we have to keep that in mind. So everyone on the board should be able to participate and also read through them, like I said, because they're more or less kind of a story. Like I said, they all play on each other. And just keep that in mind as we move forward.
Okay.
And then my only other suggestion is, obviously, there's some key policies that impact our community, and so I'm wondering if those could come forth sooner than later? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know how to say that. Like, you know, 203 talks about how we hold our meetings, you know? And I actually like how MSBA divvies those out into the 203.1 and 203.2. You know what I mean? So, you know, committees, that obviously lays out the committee work that we do. So I think, I don't know how we prioritize which comes first or whatever, but I agree with Director France, some of them do tie together. So bringing those forth together at the same time is important, and maybe prioritizing the ones that you prioritize.
So if we go, I guess we'd have four study sessions before the end of this fiscal year to try to, you know, make that part of each study session or be sensitive to what Director France said. We do have, those sessions tend to get filled up quickly with other important work. So would it be reasonable then to say, would we have you guys maybe do the prioritizing of, especially the ones that tie together? And, because I assume there's going to be one or two that are pretty boilerplate and aren't going to require a lot of time. I think there's two or three that are probably going to be the brunt of the work. You guys want to, is it the board comfortable with you getting together and kind of making that priority list? And we'll start taking input on priority 1, 2, 3, and 4 as we move through it? Are there nine, are there 10?
Oh, there's 15.
15, yeah.
18 on MSBA and 15 in the House.
Yeah, there's a few.
Chair White, I am open to the suggestion that Director Johnson gave with us looking at that or what, you know, to doing the prioritizing work if the rest of the board is okay with that. And so I don't feel, I'm open to do that if it is the will of the board. I would, yeah.
I'm good with it.
So any other thoughts? I'm not trying to push this off anybody else, but I'm trying to do the most efficient way to take a crack at this. And if we can be committed to having this done by June, I think it'll be a major step forward. So how about we start today with you guys, you know, putting together that priority list, especially with the ones that are tied together, and work your way down to the one or two or three that aren't going to require a ton of time. And lay out a, we're going to, in March, we're going to do 203, 205, 207, whatever. I'm just, and maybe even calendar out for June and see if we can wrap it up if we get a snap through.
Is it the will of the board to break them down month by month so that the goal date, so we can keep a June goal date? I think the fiscal year end being, I think that's a good suggestion. So is it the will of the board to kind of chunk them month by month and discuss them in those, you know?
That's what I hear.
Okay, I think there are some that can stand alone by any stretch.
Sure.
Yeah, but I think some of them are going to be, like I said, related to each other. And as we found out, trying to go over one, like I said, called in others. So what I would ask is that you two, if you are agreement with us, that you actually first figure out what needs to go together and then do it that way. Because if we try to break them down by like, you know, the 201, 202, 203, then we're going to run into a situation where we get up in the other numbers. We've got to go back to those. So what if we make, you know, an organizational structure with them first?
Yeah, I was going to offer something very similar because I agree, they all kind of weave together in their different ways and tell a story, as it were. So I think, thank you for taking on the first step of this, Director Johnson, Director Bullion. I would ask, let us know and give us deadlines.
Yeah.
After you're done prioritizing through Chair White, say, you know, all right, here's what we're going to tackle first. Give us your deadline by this. Because, I mean, these are policies we already operate under, right? And we came to a board retreat, you know, I've lost track of time, last weekend, where we went through a lot of this already. So I think providing that feedback should be pretty darn easy. I hate saying that word, but you know what I mean? So a lot of it, a lot of the feedback exists already. So hopefully, by the time we prioritize through Chair White, say, okay, we're prioritizing these, please get us your feedback by this date, and then we can come ready, and I think that would be helpful for people who love deadlines. I was also going to say, I think, given the fact that we also have a light policy schedule, like now is the time to do this. Because I think that is what I've heard, is that there is a pretty light policy schedule. I feel comfortable doing that, so thank you.
Any other comments, or again, I appreciate you taking that on and look forward to working with you to, if we can bang this out by June. Anything else?
Director Johnson?
All right, again, thank you very much. All right, moving on to 2025-26 Program and Staffing Reductions Discussion.
Thank you, Chair White, Board of Directors. Coming back for a second conversation about the budget reduction process. And we were mindful of the fact that with a newer board, the last time, we did not seek any kind of consensus. We just really were truly working through information. But we are at a point where we will be seeking some consensus this evening so that we can also begin making the shift of our kind of mental bandwidth to building out for next year, staffing processes, summer school, et cetera. So, and also, I just wanted to share that, you know, we've had our share of emails. You all have seen them, I have seen them. And as we discussed a month or so ago, there are a lot of priorities in our community, whether you're a parent, community member, staff member, et cetera. Everybody has unique priorities. And it's very clear, making the type of reductions that we're making, we will not be able to save everyone's priority or everyone's favorite thing. And we're very mindful of that. And I want to just be clear with the board and our community, making reductions is not something that we look forward to doing. And I also want to just be clear that where we make reductions doesn't mean that we prioritize that work or dislike that work any less than others. We just know that we have a lot of competing priorities, and we're going to have to make some tougher decisions. We also, in prior years, have engaged with the board around this. And just to kind of bring some context, when we've talked about in the past some board priorities, that is something that gave some parameters for us as administration in advance of going through a variety of, you know, budget scenarios. I think it'll be critically important moving forward after this cycle that we establish some clear priorities to understand what is the value propositions of the board as a governing body so that when we as administration are out making determinations on recommendations, we know that, you know, these are the parameters. We might say, yep, we have to cut X amount of dollars from our budget, but not in this one area or not in this area. Everything else is fair game for conversation to bring forward. In lieu of that, we've utilized our levy campaign conversations where we propose where we would have to make some reductions as our public priority parameters. So what we have tried to reflect is things that align to that space in lieu of having board priorities that were declared on the front side. So again, I think moving forward, we have an opportunity to get tighter there so that as we bring forth recommendations, again, going back to some of your conversations of the board kind of declaring the what, the administration really leaning into the how. You know, the what is the magnitude of the reduction that we have to make? How we get there, we bring forth recommendations based upon our collective experiences, both with admin, with some of our stakeholder groups that have participated on a cross-functional team to generate recommendations and bringing that forward to you. So what you see here tonight, again, is very similar to what we presented because we felt that this was some of our thinking collectively of where we would recommend making some reductions. And we have chunked these out into three different scenarios or phases. So we had our initial phase, which was around our staffing targets. Our second scenario was the conversation we're in now. And our last scenario will be around the structural operational reductions that we're going to have to engage in, and that would also be forward-looking for successive years. So there's, this is not a one and done. Budgeting, as you've heard Director Fredrickson allude to, is something we do year-round. There are key points that we engage more deeply around the budget, but know that budgeting by way of setting budgets, reducing budgets, et cetera, literally happens year-round because we modify and adjust as we go through. So that's what we'll be sharing with you all tonight. There's been some revisions since we posted this as well, where we're going to mitigate some impacts, and that's what we've been trying to do as well. Again, you've seen the emails. We know that there are going to be impacts. In a small district with a small budget like ours, the ripple effect is pretty significant. You know, one drop travels quite far and quite fast. And we will continually find ways to mitigate those impacts as best we can, knowing that there's going to be some impacts with regards to where we have to make additional cuts. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Fredrickson. And then following that, I know there's been some conversation that we've had several times here around titles of staff and reports that are used with certain titles, et cetera, things that we have, things that the state uses. And we're trying to bring some greater clarity around that because that also plays into some of the conversation around how we do budgeting, particularly when we're looking at TE reductions, et cetera. So Director Herman will speak a little bit more to that as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Fredrickson, who will do a recap of our presentation from last time, and then also highlight just a couple of revisions that we've made moving forward.
Let me finally just interject quickly. I forgot to say, before the meeting started, it was requested that we take a break on the hour so Liz can get out of that room. Apparently, it gets a little hot in there. So we can do that maybe when Tammy's done and take a quick couple minutes and then come back with questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair White, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. These first few slides are These first few slides are reviewed from what you saw the last time we presented this. So we were showing what some of the cuts that were made in '24, '25, this current school year. We had about a million, two administrative cuts. We had seen these several times. This is currently what our reality is this year. We have, then, some instructional, teachers on special assignment, as facilitators, Mincaps Coordinator, Middle School Principal. We have reduction in a couple FTEs for custodial staff. And then we did some reorganization in the Operational Services Department. There was an elimination of an Assistant Director and a Operational Services Finance Administrative Assistant. And we hired a Operational Services Supervisor. And then if we look at the total allocations that were made for this, again, this is this current school year, we have about $104 million that were allocated directly to schools. There's 18.8 million to departments. And those departments include transportation and custodial, who are charged to the Operations Department. So we have total expenditure allocations of $123 million with revenue projection of $122, and this board approved use of fund balance of just under $1 million. When we had the levy conversations last summer, this was the list of things that we said if we did not get a levy approved, that these are some of the things that we would have to consider as we were building the budget. We're looking for next year, we have total revenue projection with state aid of about $97 million, our levy is about $18 million, we have other funding of about $5.7 million. So our total revenue projection is about $120 million. These numbers aren't final, we'll keep updating those as we move along. As you know, you've heard me say several times, our state aid projection, a lot of that is based on enrollment numbers. We don't have final enrollment, we just have some projection numbers. So there could be possible changes. And then also, we don't know what our final investment earnings, some of the federal grants. So we'll be updating that as we get the final information. So for '25, '26, our recommendations for some budget reductions, and these have already been discussed, and this board has given us the go-ahead on these three items. So reducing, or increasing the class size targets by reducing six certified and non-certified, or non-certified at elementary level, three FTE at middle school, and eight FTE at the high school. And those have already, as we talked about, moved forward because we had to get the enrollment information out so that people can make some choices. One of the recommendations we had around special education was to reduce three elementary special ed paras, a half-time high school special ed para, and then adjust some special ed para hour adjustments. Around Mincaps, we're moving Mincaps out of our rented Lakeville location to the high school, which will save us some transportation money. There's some microfiber reduction by not having these at the Lakeville facility, and then reducing an administrator at the high school.
Just real quickly, because there were some questions on this, microfiber for our general public is running out Wi-Fi internet service to that location, just to get some clarity. A couple people asked.
For program reductions, we're going to eliminate our online program. We don't have a lot of students attending, and they're not making the academic gains that we hoped we would have. Based on the feedback that this board has given us, we've eliminated the 1.0 FTE for third-grade sage. We will be looking at other ways to provide that service to the program. For information technology, we're reducing iPads in elementary K1, reducing staff desktop computers, and then eliminating our edgy climber and brain pop contracts. We, this board has agreed to two less student contact days for the calendar next year. And by doing that, and we did that around professional development, there was some talk that those early release or late start days were not as desired as if we just did a whole day off. So we are reducing the calendar by those two student days, which will save us on transportation, staff for those student contact days, and then two less days that we would have to have teachers on call for subs. Some of the other staffing, we have the Q comp adjustments. We're making the rev, the expenses equal the revenue that we get from the state. And then as we looked at eliminating that sage position, we've had to find some other staffing. So these are where you're going to see some differences from the original. We're proposing to reduce our TOSSA stipends by 50%, which will save us about $61,950. We are looking at a three-day furlough for all staff that works 260 days. We have kind of reviewed that, and we're going to try to make it voluntary rather than mandatory. We have some collective bargaining units that we would have to get some agreements on that we don't have. So rather than just mandating it, we're going to ask DAFT to voluntarily take a three-day furlough. We have some positions that we're reducing for the administrative assistants, the Mincaps position, we will be reducing that. And then other things that we've looked at, we have a fitness committee that provides, actually, they provide the water coolers at the schools, we, we knew that. They provide some other wellness incentives around the buildings and this office. So we're eliminating the fitness committee budget, which is about $15,000. And then to close the pool at Twin Oaks. So all of those will give us about $4.1 million of reduction. There are a couple other things that are going to max or optimize our resources by eliminating our employee assistance program. We have available a similar program through our new health provider. So we are going to eliminate the contract we have with EAP. And then we also have vector software, which is some of our professional development training software that we are mandated to provide for all of our staff. They used to provide it for free, they've now informed us that they will charge us for it. We're going to have to pay for that software. And then we're also looking at one daily building substitute for our elementary site, which hopefully will save some of the teachers on call charges. Those are the things that we put together for reductions. And then just the timeline, we need to have a budget approved at that June 9th meeting. So continue to have updates as we move forward. And that is what we have.
Chair White and board, I just want to clarify one point, too, on here, that we didn't change what was posted here, we thought we'd just bring it to the discussion. So the, the furloughs that we discussed, we'll be reworking that and recouping the cost that, actually more than what we've identified here, through adjusting some of our chargebacks with staffing supporting of community education. So we're looking at a target of around $125,000, $130,000 in lieu of the 86, 250 there. We will net some savings in the furlough. That's to be determined based upon those who would volunteer. But we actually recouped more than what we would need to substitute that line, speaking to the notion of setting up a, an us versus them with staff and contracts, to make it all or none is what we would like to work to do. But if we can't get that, we just felt it's, it's safer staff morale to not do that by way of mandatory. So we'll do that by voluntary. That would be on top of that $125,000, $130,000 range that we will receive from the offsets of chargebacks that qualify for the work that we do. For example, like any utility costs, things of that nature, staffing costs that supports community ed, we can, that's coming out of general fund, we can do some chargeback. So we'll see what happens with that line item. That would just be additional that we would bring to the June, obviously by the June 9th board meeting, that would be on top of our projected savings. I just want to give that point of clarity.
Okay. Director Fredrickson?
With the reduced TOSSA stipends by 50%, obviously, when you have teachers on special assignment or principals on special assignment, they typically do their own job and somebody else's job. So how is that going to be rectified with, and I, and I know we have wanted to get rid of the concept of TOSSA and POSA for a while, but are we going to, what jobs will be eliminated and what work won't be getting done? I guess is what I'm asking.
So, so those TOSSAs are, or those stipends are in place for extended employment for those individuals. So typically, they are teachers on a 185-day contract, but they have some responsibilities in preparation for an upcoming school year or closure of an existing school year. So those responsibilities are going to fall back to, in many cases, the administration at the building level in preparation for the upcoming school year. In the case of peer coaches, they too receive that stipend for their extended employment, and we will have to adjust their duties and responsibilities accordingly as well.
I'm going to ask the question, the elephant in the room, question about TOSSAs, and that's planning for Wolf Ridge, because a lot of those, that's not.
No, this is not that.
So that does, that's not included.
No, these are peer coaches, these are deans of students.
Okay, so it's the Q comp combined with the TOSSA.
Yep.
Okay. And we're bringing Q comp back to only what is being provided by the state?
Reimbursed by the state. Correct. Yep.
Are we going section by section or board member by board member? What do you like to do?
I think if you have a comment, go ahead.
Thank you for asking that question, because I have the same thing with TOSSA. I'm just, it worries me that at the state level, Q comp is being targeted as well. So that worries me, I understand. But this is, the, the peer coaches do a lot of really good work, and so I'm just, I'm worried about that. I, I understand it, but I, at the state level, it's not looking good there either. The, I had a microfiber question that was answered, thank you. Brain pop. So that looks to be about $30,000. Is that, am I doing the math right? Because edgy climber, the last budget presentation we had, that was at 13, so.
Yes.
Math, Jess. So brain pop, that's predominantly used in elementary, correct?
Actually, both elementary and middle school. K8, we have two separate, we've had two separate contracts for that in the past, both middle and elementary.
Okay. I'm just naming it in the room. It, it is, I think, used more for elementary, would you say?
Yes, most definitely.
The elementary staff already has seesaw taken away from them, which they loved and used quite a bit. So I just want to, I understand, again, none of this is good, right? I'm naming that. But I'm just fearful of another resource being taken away from the elementary level. The, can you help explain, you kind of touched on it a little bit, Dr. Thomas, that, help me understand the three-day furloughs. So I'm, the, the people working on a 260-day calendar, so can you, and you said it might even be more than this. So without trying to be identifiable, can you talk to who, what those positions might be?
Yeah, so people who essentially work year-round, who don't have like those, that summer month off. So our principals, there are other administrative supports as well that work sometimes 12-month contracts versus like 10- or 11-month contracts. And our ideal conversation was to have that group of individuals take a three-day furlough, and we would target it, the initial idea was to target it July 1st, 2nd, 3rd, that really slow week of the school year anyways, and to have the, mitigate the impact or whatever, if you, if you will. There still would be some impacts, we have summer programming going on, but that was the, the target. Because we can't get all 260 employees in agreement around that, to make it mandatory and exempt only certain people that have maybe contractual clauses that would be their right to not have to take that, it creates an us versus them within the bargaining, within the broader 260 employee pool of, well, this group is exempt because they have language that protects that, while we have to pay the price for the work that you all chose not to participate in. And so it really set up a lot of tension. And when we looked at that impact, as well as some of the disruption, even in the slow week that would have with some of our summer programming, we identified a way to actually make up that cost and more by way of some chargebacks, so that we don't have to make this mandatory. So effectively, that line item here has a strike-through, okay? The, the three-day furlough, there is, we didn't change it because it was already uploaded, we wanted to have the conversation first. But if you could visually see that, similar to what we had up above with, with the sage FTE, that is, we're striking that in our recommended, our initial recommendation, from our initial recommendation, we are replacing that with about $125,000 to $130,000 in chargebacks that we can do with, with the community ed. And then we will offer a three-day voluntary furlough, similar to the executive team that took furloughs last year. They weren't mandated to do that. That was something they voluntarily did. It's something that I chose to do as well. So we may net additional savings through the voluntary process. We can't account for that until we've identified who would actually take that.
And then what do you mean by chargebacks?
So if we do work from the Fund I, like if I, if, if in my role, I do work to support community education, I can charge a portion of my time from Fund I that we're paying for my time to the community ed Fund IV budget, because my work that I'm doing directly aligns to supporting community education. If community education is utilizing some of the gym spaces after schools, we charge some of the, those evening utility rates back to the Fund IV, not all of it's coming out of Fund I. So legally, we can charge back to Fund IV for the usage of Fund I services, spaces, staffing, et cetera. And talking with Joel, who leads community education, he and I have identified that range that I'm speaking of, that would actually net us what we are trying to target there because we're trying to offset, you know, some of the other reductions that we pulled back from our initial conversation. And I think that would definitely take care of that, plus add a little bit more reduction. And then like I said, if we get furloughs, great, that would be additional revenue that we would save in the long run. But we're not going to account for that until we know actually who would do it. And then similar to like what we did, we tried to target days where we could rotate and offset one another so that we have key people at key times all throughout the district.
One more question and then a comment. Mincaps administrator, have we thought anymore about the impact that that's, well, I mean, of course it's going to have impact, because all of these things have impact. What taking that person away will do to the existing staff? I mean, I, I'm just having a hard time reconciling in my mind how this program is going to continue without a leader. And then the staff that's already strapped to do the other things are taking that part on. I'm just, if you can. I'm just, if you can talk to that a little bit more, because that's what I'm having trouble reconciling in my head.
So the Min Caps program, moving into the high school, will have a leader. We have administration that currently exists within the high school that as part of their assignment, a portion of their assignment, similar to how we bifurcate the administrative duties in the high school currently, some supervise a certain amount of departments, counselors, whatever, we would bifurcate some of that responsibility to a singular individual who would take the primary responsibility of supporting Min Caps. And, you know, I don't have the ratio of time of support, but that would be, you know, if I'm the, one of the APs, I would take full supervision of Min Caps, while my colleagues then would take on, you know, maybe perhaps some of my administrative responsibilities that I might have maintained, so I can dedicate more time to Min Caps. We have balanced that administration load there. And same with the support aspect, and again, the two individuals that are impacted by this are phenomenal individuals. As I said earlier, we're not talking about things that we don't value, or people that we don't value, programs that we don't value. We value everything that's on this list, and which we didn't have to do any of it, quite frankly. I mean, some stuff we can always, you know, continue to optimize, but we have some, we have some things in here that, you know, make us lose tons of sleep. So we would have to look at that support infrastructure that exists within the high school as well, to reassign some of those administrative support functions that are tied to some of the core functional work of support in Min Caps to other existing functions in the high school. And again, having conversations with the administration, we have the bandwidth to be able to redistribute some of that. And yes, in an ideal world, we would love to host it at, you know, that offsite campus, you know, my conversations, I'm sure Dr. Edwards' conversations with the staff at Min Caps. There are some things special to leave campus, to go to a business site, so to speak, for the types of pathways. I would also say that there's unintended positive things that could happen too, and such as our enrollment has skyrocketed in terms of our ability to make up nearly 100% of the enrollment from a partnering district that also had to back out. So about 80%, maybe slightly over 80% of that enrollment was made up by our high school enrollment, because there are some families who didn't want to travel to Lakeville, so we're attracting those families now. So I think we, I think we have a great opportunity, and clearly we have space within that building to run a very robust Min Caps. I fully appreciate, you know, the business offsite aspect, but I think our staff, and I know the staff are committed within the program to make this program the best that it can be, given some of the discussions that we have to consider around this recommendation.
I did have a question about pool, but I can, I know we're going to get an update from Director Powers on that, so I can relegate some of my.
Well, if it's okay, it's kind of a strange time, but I can let, goes out of jail there for a few minutes.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And come back at 7:18, is that all okay?
Okay.
All right, we get started up again. Thank you for that quick break. Your girl said she's done for now. Dr. Mason, you have?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions, very simple, they're quick. The three-day furlough, how many approximately 260-day calendar staff do we have that would be offered as voluntary?
Just a minute, 17. One second, we'll get it.
I apologize, board, my computer died, so I'm restarting it now, but I believe it was around 217. About what you remember it?
Can you answer the question?
I was just asking, how many, like 260-day staff, full-time staff, do we have that would be offered the furlough?
215, I apologize.
And then, I have a second question that I was thinking of around the desktop, the desktop computers. If we are removing desktop computers for some of the staff, would there be offsetting costs if they're requesting like docking stations or monitors or things like that? I know, I think they have laptops, but I'm not sure if they have.
Yeah, we have these here.
I don't know if that, is that ultimately going to be eaten up by them requesting other peripherals?
Mark, do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I heard the question correctly.
Yeah, I was asking if, you know, if we take away the desktop computers, or is that just going to be offset by them requesting, you know, docking stations, monitors on their peripherals to help them work? It's hard to work on a laptop all day, right?
It is. Agreed. So it could potentially, there could be some additional investments made. We could look at retaining the monitors, but then it would need a dongle connection, right?
Sure.
We would have to review requests for docking stations. The issue, one of the main issues with the desktop computers in the classroom is their age, they're eight, nine, 10 years old. This hardware is Windows 10 on Windows 10, which is going end-of-life, and we can't, it won't be supported, and they do not have the hardware to upgrade to Windows 11. They won't be able to handle it, so.
Yeah.
And we'll have to take all that into consideration if we move forward.
Okay, so we can retain monitors and potentially use them?
Yeah, we will.
And just like this station right back here, team, is kind of like an example of what we're talking about. And it takes about 20 minutes to boot up and boot down. And it's just really, really dated.
Makes sense, but I would understand why they would want to monitor what to use their laptop with, or whatever, you know.
We would bring forward creative solutions, trying to address those concerns.
And I'm just, I'm just thinking about. Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I heard the same thing when I was over at conferences, the teachers, you know, obviously working on a little tiny laptop is super hard, so having the big screen and even like the keypad, I guess, the iPads that they have on don't have a keypad, so like entering grades is really difficult for them, because they have to do the numbers and versus like typing up here.
Oh, the MacBook Airs don't have the keypad.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I just, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Director, because I just want to add that as well, so.
Yeah.
True, move out, thank you.
You mean the iPads don't, the MacBook Airs have?
MacBook Airs have.
Not the.
Not the number. So they might want to keep the keyboards.
Student iPads don't have external keyboards or a keyboard case.
My iPad's don't.
The students have the iPads.
My only other question was around the pool. I have a few questions, but I don't know if we want to go there yet. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we're, again, we're, we're here as a resource to you all, to provide context. You know, if you have questions about, you know, things, we can bring that additional information that can help you make better meaning. So our team is here for context.
So, I mean, I think the 75,000 is the NOB. Do we have more information on the repairs that are needed and the timing?
I've asked Dan Powers to come forward tonight to give some context on conversations beyond just the Fund One savings that are immediate, and just kind of the tail that comes along with the conversation of prioritizing swimming over other factors within our LTFM. So that's something that I know that Dan will be prepared to speak to tonight.
Yeah. Thank you for giving me a chance to here to sit and talk.
And I'm sorry, Dan, also talk about some of the key LTFM projects that we have on the docket prioritized already, and what would be shifted?
Nope, I'll run into all of that stuff. Thank you, sir. We'll start off, this is just a brief background, and then we'll get to more of the pool stuff. As we're looking at the operations department, and I'm looking at the cuts that we're looking at, aside from the things that are, we're discussing right now, the pool and everything else, part of my job that I represent for the district, for Dr. Thomas, for all of us here, is to look beyond this year. So one of the things that I'm looking at is, okay, what is the next year going to look like? What is the year following that going to look like? I was one of the ones, we were in the initial conversations about, okay, if we have to close a school, what do we do? And I jumped in around that conversation. I've been through part of that before in Burnsville. We had to close three different locations. They've been sitting empty for years, and it's costing the district a fortune every year, because most of them have to be maintained to a certain level. So as I was looking at, okay, all of these things we're going to have to do for reductions, one of the things that popped into my head, and it's not necessarily a popular idea, but my job is to make sure I bring forward those ideas, whether they're popular or not. One of them was, okay, if we're closing a school, what do we do with that site? Do we sell it? Do we keep it and hope that things are going to change? Do we utilize it in a different way? My recommendation was, sell this building, sell the land that's here, relocate the staff that are here to that location. Now, there are three obvious choices that we could look at for those buildings. I'm going to, as part of this, my spring is building up the case for all of those. I will make a final recommendation with the senior leadership team, but I want to make sure and represent those to the best of my ability and show you how each one of those locations can be used in a different way. But that's not going to stop me from saying, if we sold location A, this is what I think we could get for it. Or if we sold location B. I'm not going to stop by just doing the basics. I want to make sure that you understand all of the options as I see them, so that when you have all those questions, you can come up with more for me, and then I will try and find those answers. Then the following year, what are we going to do for the next set of things? You know, I'm looking at, if we have to continue to make reductions in the facility side, how can I make operational changes so that we can affect those types of reductions? And some of the things we're looking at aren't just reducing staff, it's reducing access to fields, because if I can't mow all the fields, what is that going to do for programs for sporting events? They can't be on those fields if we can't mow them. It'll look like a jungle in a short period of time. So those are the types of things I'm looking at, whole package, when we're looking at all of these things. Now, jumping into the swimming pool, we are looking at direct, actual direct physical cost to operate the pool of about $75,000. Those things are broken down to our utility costs, and our chemicals, and other things that we directly use just for the pool. That's not counting the maintenance side, that's not counting the cleaning side. If we add all those things in it, it bumps it up a little bit more. Obviously, I would reallocate the cleaning staff to doing something else that's not being done now. I would reallocate the maintenance staff to something else that's not being done right now. That's just the physical straight operating budget. Then we've got, we jump to the other side of things. A lot of people talk about the LTFM side. The people in this room probably understand LTFM budget, that's a completely separate pot of money that we use for things.
Sorry, Dan, just for our listening public, LTFM, long-term.
Long-term facility maintenance, there we go. I apologize now for saying that, for the people online. I'm talking to the people in this room, I should be including all of everyone else in the conversation.
And by the way, the LTFM plan that the board approves every year is a 10-year rolling plan.
Exactly. So that's, that's something that we are constantly evaluating to make sure we're doing the best we can for the district. There's a limited amount of funds that the state allows us to bond for, to make sure that we're doing these facility upgrades that we can. It's a, it's not much, it's a million and a half every year. And that sounds like a lot, until you realize, when I was, I, part of my job coming in the district was to look and evaluate the buildings as they are right now, and to come up with a plan, not just for the next 10 years, but longer than that if possible. But for the next 10 years, I've identified already over $30 million worth of deficient maintenance and needs that each one of these buildings has, $30 million. I have, in those 10 years, I'll have available 16 million. So I know flat-out, I don't have even half the money. I don't, to do everything we need to do in these buildings. I'm exceptionally fortunate that the people that were before me were able to roll a lot of those things, the needs the district had, into other bonding challenges. When they're building a school, they were able to roll in a lot of other things to those schools. We did a tremendous amount of upgrades in Granwood, and we were able to update the HVAC system, we were able to update the flooring and the lighting, but those are things that we won't be able to do anytime soon. So as I'm looking at the best use for that LTFM fund, I have to look at all of those things too, and that's where the pool pops into another side of things. Just like for this building, I've identified about a million dollars worth of things that need to happen to the district office. That was one of the reasons I recommended that if we have to close a school, we sell this building. There's a lot of things that have to happen in this building to keep it a comfortable place to be. From the HVAC systems, I'm going to have to replace those in a period of time of probably three to four years. I'm going to have to be looking at a parking lot. I'm going to be looking at, there's a long, I've got a list of things, I can share it with everybody later on. These are things that were identified that were already on the LTFM budget, the rolling 10-year budget that Director Franz talked about. And I am looking at that entire thing and redoing it right now. The goals I'm looking for are to capture the things that I can save the district money on in the long run, like converting as many buildings as I can to LEDs. As we know, that's a quick and easy way to recapture money, just from the money that comes from the state, as well as the savings in utility costs. LEDs are more efficient, that's what it is. So how much money of that 1.5 million can I spend doing that type of work? How much of that? I will always put life safety first. We had a challenge at Jeffers Pond this winter. We lost the boiler. It went down. That leaves me one boiler. We have two boilers, that leaves me one. This happened before the really cold stretch happened. If I have a hiccup happen, that school closes. People cannot be there. You cannot use that school without that boiler working. So I had to take a boiler that we had scheduled to be installed at Hidden Oaks in the swimming pool area. We're running one boiler in the pool at Hidden Oaks. If I lose that boiler, the pool is down. So we took the boiler that was scheduled to be installed to make sure we had a backup at Hidden Oaks Pool, and I installed that at Jeffers Pond, so that we had two boilers to be able to make sure that that school was operational for the entire winter. And thank goodness we had it, because I lost that boiler two weeks ago, the secondary boiler that was strained because of having not a backup all the time. They're back up and running great now. But that's the juggling that I have to do almost every day, district-wide, because we, we are a trim district for that side of things. There's just, there's not a lot of money. I could spend $5 million a year doing upgrades, and we still wouldn't get caught up on everything. We just wouldn't, because more things are going to come up. I'm still trying to identify other things as I go through it. I can't get estimates on things until I actually know that we have a challenge on things. That was one of the questions that Director Atkinson asked earlier, is do we have all these numbers? Have I gone out for RFPs on all of these things? I haven't, because I haven't identified that they're even there yet. That's part of my job. Jim Delwue and Maureen did an excellent job of identifying $25 million worth of those projects. I just added $6 million in the last three weeks of identified projects, and I'm going to continue to do those, and that's my, the rest of this spring and all of this summer, and it'll be continuous. I'll be constantly evaluating the buildings to see how they're doing. We're looking at the pool, and I have, the numbers bounce around. It really depends on which part of it you're looking at. I am looking at just the tile alone, the tile for the floor and the walls. Now, it's not just the tile, because there's a gutter system that goes around the entire perimeter of that pool, that the water that gets on the deck drains into. That gutter system is decayed to the point where it's not necessarily safe. Is it safe with the cover on top of it? Yes. Is it going to continue functioning the way it is for now? Yes. But in the future, it will stop functioning. What is directly below that gutter system is a tunnel system that goes around the entire pool. So if I have to do any work on that gutter system, I very well may need to replace all of the concrete around the entire pool, because of that tunnel system that's below there. If I go to chunk in to replace that gutter system, I have this much space between the top and the bottom. That's it, I got eight inches. If I take that gutter out, and it does what I think it's going to do, it's going to collapse down in the pool, so we have to plan that I have to take the entire thing out. That's just part of, that's that tile part right there. Then if we're looking at other things, I've got the HVAC system in that pool, it's old, it's failing, it's going to need to be replaced. So all of those types of things that I've identified already, we're really close to, oh, where's the numbers? I lost it, it's about $695,000. Just those immediate costs. That's not counting... That's not counting a lot of other things that are, I've, I've got the list I can share with all of you on that type of stuff too. It's, I have, I have it broken down by location for the LTFM needs by location. In a lot of locations, we need a million, two million, three million, five million dollars worth of work. This is not uncommon. That I need six hundred, seven hundred, a million dollars for the pool at Twin Oaks, that's a little bit more than normal. I mean, I need a million dollars for Jeffers Pond, all school. So when we were looking at recommendations, is the pool something that the community loves and wants? Yes. We get fifteen thousand dollars a year for revenue on that pool from Storm Swim Club. And just the operating cost alone, seventy-five thousand dollars. Of the money that I need to repair Twin Oaks the way it should be done, one thing I didn't include in the Twin Oaks side, but is included on the Hidden Oaks side, we just purchased a new filter system at Twin Oaks for the cost of about a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. I need to do the same darn thing at Hidden Oaks in a year or two. If we close the pool at Twin Oaks, I can take that filter system and by the time we would put it in at Hidden Oaks, it would save us about a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars on the LTFM side. This is not general fund stuff. Just another one of those dominoes that pop into it as we're looking at the repercussions for doing any of this stuff. So there are things, I mean, I can share a little bit more. As we're looking at locations, Five Hocks. Eventually, I will need to replace those boilers there. The entire HVAC system, that's, I'm looking at sometime between now and ten years from now. Two and a half million dollars. I am looking at parking lots. Just the bare minimum parking lot repairs this year are going to run us about four-hundred thousand dollars. That's what I need to make sure the parking lots don't tear themselves up. That's not re-milling them and doing a whole new parking lot. That's just crack sealing them and putting on the finish that we can to get them to last another two to five years. I think it's worth it because the cost of repairing or completely replacing that parking lot is too high. Yeah?
I have a, I have a question, Mr. Powers. So I, I appreciate all the details that you're giving us. So are you saying that when you talk about these costs that you're mentioning, these are all costs that were not included in the LTFM plan?
Some of them have been. So, and that's, that's important too, because some of these were already identified, like I mentioned with, by Jim and Maureen both. And the original plan that you guys approved last year, a good chunk of those things were there. I'm just adding to them as I'm going along.
So I'm having a hard time just to, I'm having a hard time understanding, what are you adding to? And the reason I ask is like with the pool, there was about three-hundred thousand dollars, I think, in the LTFM already. And so, and I thought it was.
That didn't include the gutter system, which right there is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I understand that, I think it would be helpful, I mean, I, I actually, we have a pool and I understand what you're saying. But I also understand there's, there's ways of doing things where you're not, okay, we're going to knock down all the concrete and all these things. So there's a company I believe you're probably familiar with called Aqualogics, I believe, and they'll come in and they'll do an RFP.
I would, I would, I look forward to getting that done. I'm not at that point. But part of the reason I wasn't at that point yet was because I, there were other things I considered higher priorities, like the boilers at different locations and all of those lines. So, but I definitely would reach out to do that, definitely. No, as, as I've identified these things, because of my construction background, I have a guess of how much things are going to cost. But as we get towards that point where it's a viable project, then we, yes, we reach out to those contractors and I definitely want to get, not just, I mean, it depends on the cost that we're looking at on RFP to get several people to come in and do those that investment.
I think, given the passion around this particular topic, I think it's only wise for us to gather as much information as we possibly can surrounding this topic. And I know I sent in a list of about eight questions.
Yeah.
And I'll let you finish your presentation.
No, 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 that's, actually, I was, the next thing I was jumping into was actually your eight questions, so that works for me. So we, that was the first one you were talking about was the RFPs. No, I haven't reached out for any RFPs because, like I mentioned, the priority list, that hadn't jumped up on my priorities for this year. But especially when we started talking about closing the pool, it definitely shuffled to a further joint. As we are looking at, see, your second question was about pool utilization. I do have some numbers where I mentioned the Storm Swim Club paying us fifteen thousand dollars just at Twin Oaks. They used about four-hundred-and-sixty-six hours worth of time there. They used about the same amount of time at Hidden Oaks. So it's, it's almost no difference between those two pools for usage-wise. We've got.
Can I ask you a clarifying question on that? Director Boy, you want to go ahead?
I was just, you mentioned four hundred and some hours at, did you say four sixty-six?
Four sixty-six at Twin Oaks, correct.
At Twin Oaks and similar.
Similar at Hidden Oaks, correct.
Would you, would it be fair to say combining those, those hours is what the Storm Swim Club uses?
Yes, I can answer that.
Joel, Joel, you want to speak too?
It's, it's high school all the way through swim lessons, which is tiny children. So adding those together, they, they can't overlap because they use the pools at the same time for the same, each facility is used every day by the swim club.
Okay, so is there, could you say if those, the, the hours needed would be combining those two?
That's, it's a good question. And the challenge, part of the challenge with it, especially in the, and the person in the back of the room could probably say this, the swimming pools are at different temperatures.
Yeah.
Primarily because of the community ed use, or the community use versus the competition use. Competition pools cannot be that warm. Now, if we were going to increase the usage of the community for the pool at Hidden Oaks, there would be times where we could schedule to have the pool bumped up temperature-wise, but in general, it would be much colder. And that would not be favorable for, especially the really young kiddos to swim in. It just wouldn't be.
Can I ask Joel to come and get some clarification on that cost as well on the personnel side?
Yeah. The cost, what, what we actually brought in as far as rental from Storm in Twin Oaks was just under thirteen thousand. When Dan mentioned the fifteen thousand plus, it also included our personnel charges to them. So the rental itself of the pool was like twelve thousand nine hundred. And then the hours, the reason there's a, so Storm generally will use Twin Oaks during the school year when there's swim seasons and stuff going on, utilizing the other pool. And then in the summer months, Community Ed also runs a swimming lessons program. We have typically used Twin Oaks in the past, which then pushes Storm to the other pool in the summer. So there's really not a way you'd be able to combine all of those hours into one, they're just, the timing overlaps. So you're not going to make up all of those hours in one location.
Is there a, what does the discussion look like or what does the forecast look like? If the pool is closed, is the, are, are we talking about stopping the swimming lessons? Are we talking about, like, what does it, what would be the effects if the Twin Oaks pool was closed? What, could you speak to that a little bit?
The impact to, I mean, the, the greatest impact is going to be on our, on the Storm Swim Club. So in the summer months, because Community Ed would be pushed out of Twin Oaks and we would now have to move our program to Hidden Oaks, that would take up of the majority of the time over the summer months in Hidden, which Storm currently uses. And then during the school year, because you have the swim seasons, boys and girls swim seasons, they're using time at Hidden as well, which generally pushes club swimming more to evening hours and possibly weekends outside of having a meet. So there's definitely going to be a reduction in the amount of time that they have based on priority levels, which is school-sponsored programming first and then any kind of outside user coming in after that as a second priority.
Is there any way that we can under, have a, a better understanding on that, the impact of the Storm Swim program itself? You know, forecasting what that might look like? And, and I don't know, maybe that's not, maybe that's not board discussion, but I think to, to grasp, to truly grasp like what it look, what the impact means to the clubs and to the community ed. Because what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing you say is that the community ed will receive the priority over the Storm Swim Club. And if you could just.
Yeah, district, so we can't speak to third-party entities and the, the total impacts of their programs. You know, obviously, we know there's impact. But as a school entity, we exist first and foremost as a school program entity. So to Director Dull's point, anything outside of our PE classes, for example, and then community education, which is part of our district, that's number one priority. Anything else after that, if there's availability, no matter the club, no matter the sport, no matter the, we have priority occupancy of our educational spaces first and foremost because this is, we exist for this primary program. If we can find ways to open up spaces to the community for a variety of reasons, whether you're renting a space, using tools, you name it, we'll clearly do that through community education. So I wouldn't feel comfortable for our staff to weigh in. I think as a board, your focus is on what we do during the day for our primary purpose. Outside of that, we wouldn't be beaten to that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a question. When you started this off, you talked about having a thirty million dollar budget and sixteen million actual funds coming in. I assume that's from the state and is that, is that recursive? Do we get more money? I mean, how does that formula determine that sixteen million versus thirty?
That's just LTFM money. That's what we were able to bond yearly. That's just the ten-year, when I add up all the, each individual year is how I got to that sixteen million dollars.
So it's, so I'm just trying to understand, so first of all, the time span, the thirty million, is that for the ten-year?
That's for the ten, well, that's just identified programs right now, whether I can get them, however I can get them done if I can.
Okay, and usually the LTFM bond is based upon the age of our buildings and all that. We get, if there's a formula behind it.
Yeah, it's, it's student-based. It's about three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per student, but then we get a percentage of that based on the age of the buildings.
Okay.
Which it's all based on a twenty-five-year age average.
Okay. And part of that goes to pay off the bonds.
Yes.
Right, that's, that's the next question that I had. It not only goes off to pay off the bonds, but you're making estimates so many years in advance outside of inflationary costs and all that.
Correct.
Because I've been here where the cost to do something like the building automation system at, at Glendale one time went off and it, they estimated it was going to be like four-hundred thousand, it turned out to be five-fifty or maybe somewhere around there, it was about a hundred thousand dollar difference because they had estimated on the ten-year rolling, by the time we got to it, software costs more, the, everything costs more.
Costs went up very fast in the last five years.
Yeah, and we're looking at a three percent inflation increase a year alone.
Exactly, and that's, that's the best we can do is forecast. So when I come up with the thirty million dollars, that's just my best guess. The thirty million dollars is cost today even, that's not what it would cost going forward. So if I break that down and add in inflation and all those things, it really depends on which project gets pushed, pushed out the furthest.
And do you have those projects, like you said, you prioritized them? And obviously.
That's what I'm doing, I'm in the process of right now.
So the health and safety of our students and our.
Will always be first.
Okay.
Yep.
Director Edwards, you, what kind of impact will the Twin Oaks pool closing have on the middle school?
The academic day?
Yes.
Yeah. So currently, we do have that, use of that pool embedded into our curriculum. That is a local decision that we have.
Correct.
The authority to make, there's no state requirement for swimming. So that has been a local decision. That is something that has the middle school staff, specifically in the FIAD area, because that's the group that teaches that, is looking at the new elective wheel offerings through the changes in the curriculum. They will be, they are currently assessing how they will utilize swimming as a possible unit in which courses it might reside. They certainly have brought up concerns about students traveling across the street, obviously during the winter months in particular, to have swimming if they are a student that generally takes their physical education class at the other site. So that, those are things that they are still working through. But there will be changes in the amount of swimming that would be a part of the local FIAD curriculum. That definitely will have change in activities that will be part of the FIAD curriculum.
Excellent. No decision on that yet.
Correct. But they're still working through that.
Sorry to add on that. They could walk over to Hidden Oaks and taste swimming still for that one to two week, whatever that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just part of a unit.
Yeah.
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 Outside of the winter months, I think, is one of the concerns.
Right, and we would prioritize fall and spring as we would cluster and then maybe we'd have to identify, is there a grade band that we say this is where that entry point would be? So we'd have to modify that, but there'd be access. It would just look a little different.
My next one might go together. What impact does this have on our teams here as far as, as far as that? And then as well as, since Community Ed and our teams will be using that, you talked about changing the temperature of the pool. You've talked multiple times about, right, boilers up and down and all of these types of things. What does that look like calculating in? Right, I'm assuming extra strain going up and down, that, those types of things.
That's, it's a good question. And let me do the first part and then you can answer, Joel. A good chunk of the programming that Community Ed does is during the summer months, which the pool usage from our swim groups is much less during that time period. So we could, I mean, is there opportunities where I would have a couple of weeks where the pool would be sitting at eighty-five degrees? Yes. Is that going to strain the system? I just changed the set point. These boilers are designed to run full-on out for six months out of the year minimum. The reason that the ones are going bad now is they're old. And part of my job is to make sure that we get them the work that they need to continue working. I'm replacing the one boiler at the Hidden Oaks Pool right now so that we make sure we have that backup. But there are things, I mean, and that's part of me working with the Community Ed group to schedule that type of an event to make sure if, okay, the varsity and the, if the school is not using the pool for this chunk of time and Joel's team wants to schedule it, then we, work it out, say, yeah, let me change the temperature for your group. So it's, it's definitely doable.
And I, I would just say to the high school activity side, they used a total of seventy-six hours last year in Twin Oaks. Majority of theirs is in Hidden Oaks. They used over thirteen hundred hours in there. So it really won't impact them much. The seventy-six hours, the majority of that was when there was maintenance or things happening on the other pool and they had to transition over. So it really, it really wouldn't impact them all that much. As far as the, the pool adjustments, like Dan mentioned, Community Ed only operates a swim program in the summer when the high school teams aren't necessarily using that. And we have typically increased the temp, which is something that the O4 Fund will help pay to offset the cost of increasing that pool temp for the months of June, July, and August. So it doesn't increase the cost back to the District O1 Fund, we cover that portion.
Good.
And Director Dull said that's kind of a good example of real-life chargeback of what we were talking about earlier.
And then, I got one more, sorry. Did you, have we traditionally hired individuals at both pools for Community Ed during the summer? Or was it normally only one and will that look the same just vice versa?
Yeah, yeah, we, we only hire for the one pool. And the other pool is typically used by, or in the summer for their program. So we would transition our staffing over to the other.
So, I mean, we're talking about cuts to the general fund. I'm just curious why, like, the seventy-five thousand dollars, the annual. Why? I'm just curious why, like, the $75,000, the annual, why that cannot be run through the community education? Or like, look at possibilities like increasing fees? And I realize by the numbers, it might be like tripling numb, and maybe that's not feasible, but... Is there a reason we can't run this? Like, or do we charge backs through community ed? If that's what the pool goes for?
Yep, so I, I think the fee things, there's only so much, you start to have diminishing return, as you noted. So we'd have to be mindful of that. In terms of the community ed taking ownership, so to speak, of the pool, we're exploring what that would entail. You know, can it be done? Yes, but we also have to be mindful of, the community ed has to break even minimally and generate some level of profit as well to pay overhead, et cetera. So it, we don't know, we have the full capacity within community ed, but it is something that we're costing out once we kind of understand what that long-term number will look like, to see what would it mean? Because to do, to do that, and I'll let the team speak more specifically, we also have to take into account how we manage the interior access points to the pool, also then creating separate external access so that it can be managed outside of the pool day, or pool day, school day. And so we, you know, there'd be some build-outs. And I'm not trying to push the burden and bleed all of the fund balance from community ed for one project, because Joel has hundreds of value-add to the, to the community. So we have to make sure that it's something that we feasibly could actually make work from a logistics standpoint on the ops side, but then also from a fiscal management aspect of community ed side. And, you know, Joel and his team are exploring, kind of, if, if we went that route, how could we guarantee revenue? And so we might have to change our leasing rental structures to more long-term residential leases, residential pool leases, et cetera, versus just seasonal, you know? So that way, we're guaranteed and that it, it's, if there's hiccups in terms of calendaring, weather closures, et cetera, that money doesn't ebb and flow, it's guaranteed. So those are some of the things that we're working through right now to explore contractually, how to make that happen. Anything I might have missed out?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, so just as an example, right now, we only run a summer swim program through community ed. We make in revenue about $36,000 over the summer. You add that 36 plus the $12,000 line that we brought in and charges to the Storm Swim Club, we're not even coming close to what that annual operating cost is. So we would have to get real creative about, and typically, we can't add much during the day because kids are in school. So during the school year, you're not going to be able to add much revenue. So what are, what would be our resources for that additional revenue? Where could we save a little bit on that? Those are the things I've been looking at as we started that conversation. I have to be able to reach that $75,000 as a minimum, right, in revenue? And then hopefully go beyond that. And that $36,000 is if we were to max out our summer swim programs. So, you know, we're, we're falling well short of that. So we have to get creative and find some ways to do that. Not against the idea, but just knowing that we have to at least break even, that's where we're at.
And one of the changes that we would absolutely need to do, Dr. Thomas briefly mentioned this, is we'd have to change the access. So we would have to have badge readers in certain areas so that the school itself couldn't access that, but also for the public coming into the pool would not be able to access the school. So I would be putting up walls and doors in a few locations. Is it something that can be done? Yes, it can be. Is it, it's going to have a cost? Yeah.
And at the end of the day, team, in full respect for many of our community partners, all of our community partners and how they engage with the district, you can see the challenge of choosing between what's good for our kids and the community and what's good for our kids and the community. And so at the end of the day, for us, if this becomes a priority and the JP boiler goes out, you know, had it not been replaced, we wouldn't have the LTFM access to then heat instructional space, which from our vantage point is priority, over swimming. No disrespect to swim, our FIAD teachers, our community partners. But at the end of the day, I would choose to put and prioritize instruction versus swimming. And so that's, that's the rub that we're facing right now. We see value. Our PE teachers see value, our community sees value in this pool. But going back to how we started, if every favorite thing becomes the priority, nothing's going to give. And so we have to find these, these points along this journey and then continue to explore, whether it's this conversation or whether it's future, you know, conversations with our community, you know, via levees. You know, all of that is to be determined at some point later on down the line. But our immediate components are where we need to make some adjustments so that we can, you know, program up for next year. These are the, these are the decision points that we're at.
So theoretically, if we could cover the costs for community ed and then the repairs come out of the LTFM, I mean, that's really just a prioritization. And I hear you about not touching like some of the things we need, like boilers, but there's a lot on here, you know, tennis courts and tracks and seal coating and things like that. Also, it would be prioritizing those repairs for the pool.
It's just, it's just shifting our priorities, that's exactly it. Yep.
I have a quick question. I hope it's quick. Every so often on our tenure list, I also see more asbestos abatement. Do we still have asbestos in the buildings?
Yes.
And that has to be prioritized? Is that buried in there now?
So, that's a good question, and the people online need to hear this as well. The buildings that we have asbestos in, it's contained.
Okay.
So the cost that you're seeing is to look at this. I've dealt with asbestos stuff my entire construction life. So as long as it's not viable, actually coming across in pieces, if it's contained in something, we don't need to do a darn thing with it. We leave it alone. The second that gets touched or damaged in any other way, then it's like the hazmat suits come out, we portion off areas, we're running clean air vacuums in those spaces so that the air isn't going into the building. Currently, we have inspections for things like the asbestos. We've got inspections for radon. We've got inspections, I mean, the inspection lists I've got is pretty long. These aren't things that we actively are concerned about. They're things that we want to make sure we monitor so that we don't have them become a concern in the future. And asbestos is a big one. It was in everything. It's in the floor tiles. It's in the glue sometimes they use to stick the floor tiles together. So as long as those things aren't disturbed, we're good to go. And that's what the inspections are. That's that yearly cost you see on that, is to make sure that those things are in good shape. I've got an inspection for the next three days starting on exactly that.
We talked a lot about the Twin Oaks Pool and the maintenance for that. I understand there's also an issue potentially with something like a catwalk or something like that that isn't in great shape or, on one of the pools. But in another area, so we're talking about Tom's maintenance, what have we got to do to keep the Hidden Oaks Pool up to speed so that...
Very good question, and it's all stuff that should be happening this year. So we've got, right now, we had a leak that was in the diabole that was repaired. But we've got something we need to do, we need to put a skim cone on it, honestly, so that it, it doesn't reopen itself. I've got a small leak in the search tank. The search tank is the, the tank that sits beside the pool that helps maintain the level. So I've got a small leak in that that I need to take care of. We've got a seal, which is not a water seal, but it's a, a cover seal that the little kiddos pulled up in one section. But we have to drain the pool so that we can put that thing back down. So all of those repairs will take us a week, a week and a half. That will be happening this summer.
And that's, that's also a cost. What about, I mean, with the things you're talking about with the Twin Oaks Pool, the tile, the gutters, all that kind of stuff? Is that also due to repl, to be replaced or fixed or anything like that?
So some of it was, and that's what Director Atkinson was talking about earlier. Some of that was in the LTFM budget before.
Okay, and that was already done?
No, it's all stuff that was identified.
Identified.
It was not, not ever was done, no.
At, at, at Hidden Oaks, and is that...
No, at Hidden Oaks, no, excuse me, I'm mixing things up. No, at Hidden Oaks, we don't, that's not ready yet. The pool's in better shape for the tile and everything else.
Is that within though, any type of replacements like that within our current 10-year plan? Because what I don't want to do is throw the baby out with the batter and say, let's use the money to fix Tom's and then we...
I did not see any needs that would be, I didn't see any needs that would be within the next 10 years for the pool deck itself, just other than cleaning and a little bit of patching for the grout lines. So occasionally, those will bust out, that just happens. And then we go and fix it and we reseal it and it's good to go. But I didn't see any large needs in that area, no.
Then overall, we're talking about priorities. To me, the priority pool is the Hidden Oaks, because it's not only a practice pool, it's also our only competition pool. So, long-term, over this 10 years, what are we looking at to keep that thing...
I was...
Because I don't think you can think of one without the other, like Director Franz was talking about.
Let me see where we're at. Without looking at it off the cuff, I'd say about $350,000, but let me look and see. So the diabole filter I mentioned earlier is going to be about $160,000 when we get to it. Pool deck recoding, $75,000, so that's minimal.
So then, that's what the next 10 years. So then, if we get creative and if there's a way to make the pool whole, it's Twin Oaks from a revenue standpoint, just for the yearly cost, are the repairs all priority one? Could they be chucked out over time, giving a little less of an impact? Is there something that has to be done tomorrow or we shouldn't be using it?
So, and that's one of the conversations Dr. Thomas and I had. I mentioned life safety is priority number one. If I knew something in that pool was not safe, we'd be shutting it down. I'd drain the water if I needed to to keep people out of it. And none of that is at that point right now. These are all things that I've identified that need to happen, but not right this second. I mean, the tile around that pool in Twin Oaks is in rough shape. If we get to a point where it gets a sharp edge, I'm going to do something about that one spot to make sure that it's safe for now. But the tiles are coming up over there.
Right, and I think that's the, the big, the big thing is to your, to your question, Chair White, how much risk do we want to incur? And, and that's what it's going to boil down to. So if we delay, then these issues are the things that we're talking about. The drain tray is something that we're talking about. Headed, now that you got into the asbestos case, we can circle back around that, because I'm curious about underneath in that tunnel, because I, I only imagine that's what's down there and should it get disturbed? No?
Don't want to know.
Okay, good. I don't want to have that conversation tonight, but that is something you and I are going to want to talk about. Because, but again, I think it comes down to that. So how much risk do we want to assume to gimp something along just to, just to keep, you know, water in a container? And I'm not trying to sound crass, but like, my, my standard of expectation from a safety standpoint is that's, that's key. The tile work for me, I'd be hard-pressed to say, yeah, we're going to continue to do this and find some way to justify this without doing some of the stuff that we know is just a risk waiting to happen, particularly the tile component. I don't know anything about the mechanical structures of the gutter systems, but as you described it from a layperson's understanding, I'm worried. I'll just be honest, I'm worried about that. Particularly if it's structural and that caves, that whole wall, I mean, wherever, wherever we have a weak point, that, that cement structure is now something that we have to talk about. And I don't know where that, you know, sits for years that that would actually happen. You can kind of predict the shelf life of a boiler. I don't know if we can predict the shelf life of cement liners and all that kind of stuff that comes with pools. But that's the piece of conversation that we're trying to understand from a prioritization standpoint.
And I think, Dr. Thomas, I mean, I think something that would maybe help ease the mind is, my understanding is that that's what Aqualogic does, speaking with other districts, is they go out, they assess how much, what's wrong, how much will it cost? And, and they're really experts at what they do.
Yeah, we've got three companies that we...
Yeah, checking that box.
I think having someone come out to do that would be awesome.
Yeah.
I actually, so I was in the Twin Oaks Pool last week and spent a good chunk of time just sitting in the pool, peeling the space, looking around, seeing how it was doing. The two things I know are the highest priority. That HVAC system that's above the pool, the air quality is not what I would like it to be. Is it dangerous? No, but it's a challenge that should be addressed sooner rather than later.
And we ran into that at Hidden.
We did run into that at Hidden, and we, it took us a while to actually get it solved. It was, it was a challenge. But the one at Twin is a slightly different challenge because it's aging equipment that's just not working. Even aside from, you know, the, the cost of, I agree getting Aqualogic out there or any other vendor to help us look at it, but that's, that's kind of like a second-tier thing to me. That's the LTFM set. And could I reprioritize around almost anything else? Yes. I mean, it's just, it's where our priorities fall in the, in the life safety side and then after that.
Director White? So, if we make this decision to close the Twin Oaks Pool, what's the date? When is it? When would that?
Right now, and I have talked with my partners in community ed, I would aim for the end of summer, but before school starts up next year. That would give us time to make sure that the repairs can be done to Hidden Oaks. And then we could phase out that usage on that pool. Now, one of the things that we're looking at, and this isn't a short-term decision, Director Atkins was alluding to this one a little bit ago too. When this pool gets closed, it's not just for a couple of years.
Right.
Because in order to close a pool, I have to empty it. All of those joints that are in every one of those water pieces, all of those things will dry out in a very short period of time. A good chunk of that will need to either be repaired, replaced, or inspected, every part of it. Every one of those little joints is going to have to be inspected and worked with. If we were to recover the, the filter system from there and bring it over to Hidden Oaks, that's another cost that would need to be incurred to get that pool started. My recommendation, if the pool is closed, that it wouldn't, we wouldn't look at reopening it for at least five years. Just to make it, the cost, the savings for having the pool closed, even have a, a chance to make up for what it's going to cost to restart.
I have another question.
Yeah.
You had mentioned at the very beginning of your, your presentation about this building, about selling this building.
Yeah, district office.
Yeah, and so like, my question is, how do, we haven't seen any data or any information about selling this building. And I know we had talked about if we close a school, we have to report that to MDE. If we close this building, do we have to report it to MDE?
No, we don't have a school, it's not a school program.
Okay, so is that something that, like, as far as like a recommendation or an option? Is that something that could be brought forward?
It will be as a part of the...
It is, it is coming this summer to the board, we'll have...
But as far as right now versus the pool? I'm just thinking of, you know, different solutions, you know?
Can we accelerate as we change? Is there a reason we have to wait or can we accelerate that?
Yeah.
We, we could. The, the challenge is relocating a, a staff this size, we'd have to split them up into buildings all over the place. We couldn't go to any one location, it just wouldn't be feasible. And if we are looking to close a school already, that would be the time we could move the things around the best.
And the efficiencies of having your team or any other contractors coming in to do this, kind of like what we did when we were doing the high school, you kind of dovetail on the work stream that's already in play to kind of keep your overhead down on bringing in contractors or movers, et cetera. So, yeah, ideally, we would be able to wrap this conversation into a closure conversation so it's one package in kind of one move versus two separate moves, which will drive our costs up higher. So that's, that's where our logic is in terms of trying to optimize our savings of the cost that we'll take to sell, relocate.
I'm planning that if we close this building, that my team will be the one that will be moving this entire building someplace else. But, and that's, another thing is when, when we, if we close a school again, this is all predicated on big ifs. I have to plan how that space is going to be used in whatever fashion, you know? It doesn't matter which location, could we have extra community ed's usage out of that building to help us? If we move the district office, how am I going to have to change security? How am I going to have to build around having a new boardroom in there?
We have a tech server that's going to, you don't move that more than once.
No, that's exactly...
So we have to know where it's going to go, and so just, that's not something you rush into. So there's just a lot of factors as we all, I mean, we're our own personal residents, is how much of a headache it is times 100. So, yeah, there are some big factors that I think we'll have to consider before we rush into that so we can package that up for you all this summer.
Is there anything else around the pool that even, because it, I mean, you... Is there anything else around the pool that even, because it, I mean, it seems to me that there's no, there's no magic pill out here. I mean, we might be able to get to break even, maybe. Maybe not. Since I mean, the decision is either we're going to close it or we're going to leave it open. Costs aren't going to magically find their way to be paid for in some magic way. We have to decide is the pool at Twin Oaks a priority or is it not? Because the costs aren't going to go away. It's just going to be a matter of whether or not we want to exchange that 75,000 and then risk the, the long term maintenance fund against something else that could go wrong. And so again, I don't want to cough discussion, but I think it's pretty clear what we're up against here. Either we're going to close it or we're not. And so I don't know what kind of timeline administration is looking for for a final, final.
Yeah, we're looking for, we're looking for consensus tonight on what we've shared with the board because again, as, as a team, our psychological bandwidth right now is stretched to the max because we're in this holding pattern. We've got a year to be planning and building for. We've got summer program to be planning for. We've got staffing to be doing. So yeah, the more we can start moving forward on some key factors, the more streamlined and efficient we become as a, as a leadership team to getting some of the key work done.
So Dr. Thomas, with the pool though, I know there's, there's talk about, well, we're going to go back and talk to Joel to see what he can do.
Yeah, I think.
Are we prepared as a board to make this decision tonight? Based on there's follow up information we need in my opinion?
I, I think, I think we're, I think we're going to be as prepared as we can be this evening. I think we've given you everything that we, that we have in terms of where we're at. The likelihood of moving this into community education and in finding ways to break even, to be determined. If we're still talking about, you know, an end of August kind of date, we've, you know, we can earmark this and in, in move in this direction, we're still going to be using this pool through then as we continually explore. So I think we've got a little window of time to keep those conversations exploratory, to come back. If we say, yeah, I think we might be able to do this, then we can potentially revise something. But if we're going to come back to the board with that, we're also going to have to come back to the board with a reduction. So recommendations. So at this point, Director Atkinson, I would say we would look to move forward in this direction pending any conversations that we identify that would tell us otherwise and pending that we have a solid recommendation then to offset the 75, similar to what we've done with offsetting something else in the past recommendation.
Personally, I feel like I would like to see if we can get this funded through community ed and possibilities and to understand, get an RFP or inspections or whatever to understand really what that maintenance costs are. I mean, you know, that to me is a prioritization, like there's a lot on this list of replacing turf and tennis courts for 430,000 and a lot of probably trade offs, right, in the LTFM fund. So that to me is separate, but like the general fund savings is only 75,000 dollars. So if that is possible to fund, I would like to understand if it is possible to fund through community ed before I'm comfortable making a decision on this.
So how long? I mean. There's been a lot of, obviously a lot of community, you know, input in this and I want to be respectful of that while at the same time being responsible. And so how long, I mean, if, if we, if we pushed a, a final pool decision to March, is that enough time to figure out if this is even something that's feasible? I, I don't want to.
I'm still stuck on the 30 million dollars of lists and 16 million dollars. So most of that stuff is already going to be deprioritized, like the tennis courts and stuff like that. And we've done that before in the past where we haven't been able to do a lot of the stuff that we're nice to have. I know that, you know, we've had discussions about the turf and the football stadium and everything like that and pushing that off until it's absolutely at its last leg. So when I see only half of the money and that's whole list is 30 million and we only have 16 million, half of that's already gone anyways out of prioritization because we're not going to be able to get it done. So that's, that's my biggest concern. So e- even if we move the decision off, are we only pushing off the inevitable?
Very possible.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my, and I, and I'm not saying we don't need more information, but I, I don't want to sit there and go, oh gee, we're not going to fix a tennis court. We don't have the money to do that anyways. I mean, this is, some of that stuff is kind of a wish list.
My point is there's so much on here that could be prioritized.
So but I, I have lived through several times where we had an emergency situation and we had to borrow money basically out of another fund in order to do it because we didn't have the money long term facilities maintenance. So I'm looking at the risk factor and if we prioritize these things, I want to do it by health, safety, risk, and in the best interest of the student body overall.
Sure. And one of the things I, it's, it's interesting that you both mentioned the tennis courts. One of the things that I've been working on really, really hard was to try and find alternative ways to get these same things done. The tennis court at the high school was built on a swamp. It was the land they had, they used it. It was, it was a tough thing.
The whole thing I think is built on an aquifer, isn't it?
It is.
Which is why the organism that used it.
One of the things that we're looking at is the, the community involvement to help us to try and do that. I was in conversations with a group just last week. They could potentially cover all but 20,000 dollars of that type of work. Well, that's the type of thing I'm continually looking forward to trying because I can't make up 30 million dollars. It's not going to happen. But I can try and find those places. We got a, a heating control valve donated by a company. That was 15,000 dollars. They donated to us so that we can try and solve a problem that we've got at Hidden Oaks with the rooms on the addition part of that building not being able to be heated correctly. Those types of things, I'm constantly on the lookout to try and make our, stretch as far as I can. Because I can't do it all. Whether it is the carpet in the schools, whether it is the heating and air conditioning systems, whether it's the parking lots, whether it's the turf on the fields. Yeah. I can't do it all. So it, in, in some ways, it doesn't matter whether it's 150,000 dollars worth of LTFM money I need to spend it. Twin Oaks or a million. I can find another way to spend it.
I would just say, board, you know. 75,000 dollars, I know in the greater scheme of 120 million dollar budget seems like a drop in the bucket. But every drop counts. Like we are literally at that point, you know, with this reduction where every drop counts. Like 75,000 dollars are paras, you know? And, and for, you know, other, other functions throughout the district. So I, 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 in isolation, I, I hear what you're saying. And then in the total conversation, this, this is, this is the reality. So that 75,000 adds up fairly quickly tied to another 75 and another 100 here and another 10 there. So cumulatively, we, we, we have a 4.1 million dollar reduction. You know, that you all are discussing. So.
We have 4.1, we have four to five million this year, but we also have 45 million next year.
Right, that's, yeah, I'm, I'm only speaking for the fiscal year 25, 26.
Dr. Thomas, I'd just like to add that, you know, with our strategic plan, I mean, one of the biggest things we heard back from the community is optimize resources. And I don't know how money was spent in the past, but like I'm looking through the LTFM and I see rebuild tennis courts. And in my mind, I go, okay, that's a half a million dollars. So do we really need to rebuild the tennis courts? Or they could, could they possibly be repaired?
We are.
Like, I don't know, I don't know all that stuff.
We've repaired. We've, we've done cracks, seals.
So I guess my, my thought is like, as you go through, and I understand and appreciate you're saying, okay, I've done this. I've taken this from right here and done that. And that's a great way to optimize resources. But perhaps we can't do what we've done in the past and maybe, you know, buying new furniture or whatever the case may be. Maybe you just need to report, prioritize, reprioritize that. And so I would, my statement on the pool is I don't feel like I'm prepared. I mean, my list of eight questions. Prepared to make a decision on the pool. I would love to see, learn more about moving this over to community ed. I'm also challenged. Why do we operate two pools? I understand it's incredibly costly to operate two pools. So I understand the challenge and that's why I asked about the utilization. Like if we're only using one pool 50% of the time and we're only using the other pool 50% of the time, do we really need two pools?
Well, instructionally to that question, we could manage our internal needs with one pool.
Right.
We, so.
And activities.
And, and activities. With our high school, all that, we only need the one pool that serves dual purposes for temps, for diving, for all of that.
Yeah, and I appreciate your honesty on that. And I would just say, another part of our strategic plan is community partnerships. And so, you know, if there's a way to, we live in a late community. I went to the early childhood meeting last week and heard how important it is for early childhood, you know, kids to have access to swimming lessons, affordable swimming lessons. Because there's, there's kids who don't have access to swimming lessons in our community.
Comes through Joel's program, again, with the one pool.
Right. So I guess I, I would just like to learn more about moving it over to community ed and if we can move that conversation or if we need to decide tonight, my vote would be, I would prefer for it to be moved over to community ed is what my vote is.
So.
And to go back and define 75,000 from a different, different place for us.
I think in listening to all of, we, we've been given a ton of information tonight and I appreciate it all. Thank you very much. I think, you know, being mindful of how much the leadership team has exhausted every avenue. And so while, you know, in listening to Director Dahl and Director Powers, to make up the 75,000 dollars honestly didn't seem feasible. Given our current programming. So you know, as a board team thinking, you know, do we want to continue to exhaust the senior leadership and by kicking down, you know, kicking the can down the road? That's a, that's the real question. And I think when it comes down to these budget cuts, we can always want more information because no one wants to make any of them. And so we heard the leadership, we heard it being asked that we make, you know, give priority tonight. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can do that.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I, I'm blown away by that. The gap in funding. Based on just some regular ongoing maintenance needs. We're not talking about anything real special. It's just, I, I wasn't aware that it was, it was that dire as far as funding goes. The only one we'll ever close that gap is, is a bond election. It'll never happen another way. It's never been done in the past. We've had the same gaps in the past and eventually we had to go ask for a certain amount of money to fix all these things that you can't see. And that's, that's to your point. I, I don't know how, I don't know how you keep it open. I mean, I, I don't. I mean, to your, your point, Director Atkinson, two pools in one, two districts is a luxury. I, I don't know if there are many out there. I'm sure there are scattered around the twin cities, but to have a, a fully dedicated practice pool and a fully dedicated competition pool is a luxury. That I, I just don't know, based on the information that I received tonight that I wasn't aware of, I don't know how you do it.
Well, and with that information, are you going back and reworking the LTFM plan?
I'm in the middle of that right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I'll be presenting, I'll be presenting my full 10 year plan. I'm, I'm hoping sometime in April. It really depends. I know we need to have an official vote on that in July, but I wanted to present it as early as I could. Yeah.
Well, there's nothing else in the pool. Are we, are there things that people have questions on?
Director White, you asked for, I think if community ed could come back and.
Well, I'm assuming that you're going to continue to.
We, yeah, we're, we're going to continually explore ways to optimize resources. I mean, even after we go through this process, between now and June 30th, we're still going to be looking for ways to make adjustments and where we can continue to save. And we do that, like I said, year round. Because we're, we're making those adjustments as we look at different patterns of things. So, so yes, whether it's this specific, you know, Joel and his team, they, they have been really bringing community ed back into, into the fold since it shut down, you know, some years ago during COVID. And so, you know, I trust his leadership entrepreneurial spirit to understand how he can squeeze blood from Turner and his team. Right now, we're, you know, like he and I had conversations last week and I know I've had some one on ones with a couple of you exploring some of these things. Like this didn't just happen a week ago. We've been looking at this for a while. I think we just kind of came to a head last week of realizing the, the ability to match the expense is so great. And, and we're going to leave a lot of that to chance. We thought we might have a better opportunity to do that, but it, it's just not necessarily there in this space. Other areas within community ed, yes. But in this space right now, we just, we are, we are just not seeing it as, as the viable option, given some of the factors that we discovered last week. So I think, again, we're not above continually looking at ways to find opportunities to manage our resources more efficiently, optimize as our, as our plan says. And shift as much as we can to our other big priority around how we continually support our primary job and that's to educate kids. You know, and, and so if I, if you're asking me tonight, and again, I love the ability to do what we can with our aquatics in, in our district for ourselves and for our community. At the end of the day, we can manage our priorities with one. We can. Would love to do more and maybe that's in our future at some point to Chair White's point. You know, this community, you know, we, it, it's a bond measure, right? To, to make up this kind of a delta. And I think that's part of our ongoing conversation with the community is to help our community understand, you know, these aren't the things that people love don't come for free. And I'm not saying we have to go and spend all the money in the world, but there are some key aspects of maintaining what we have, just the maintenance of what we have, which we're already upside down on, you know, and that only, that delta is not a, a, a savings or optimizing or a cutting. That's a bond. There, there's no way. And Dan knows it. His team knows it. And we've lived this before. I think we've shut this pool down before. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, I don't know, I don't remember when, but I think it was closed for a period of time. No?
Oh.
I don't recall.
You don't recall? Okay, okay. I thought somebody shared with me out in the community that they, they had to take this measure to mothball for a period. Okay, so I, I respect it.
They didn't mothball it. They couldn't afford to put the people in there one year.
Yeah, so maybe it just wasn't occupied.
So they didn't drain it or anything like that. And then, of course, we had the year with the, with the construction that both pools were, because we didn't have a.
And Dr. Thomas, you said there's, I know there's this variance of this operating cost. Have we had a conversation with Storm? Because I remember they came and spoke a couple of months ago saying that they would offer additional money.
Yeah, I know they've been having some conversations. Anything?
Can I, can I just add to that? So I, I was going to mention that, you know, essentially by us investigating how we can make it affordable for community ed to operate the pool, essentially that's what it's going to be. It would be another meeting with the storm saying, okay, if we're going to operate this way, we're definitely going to have to change the rate that they're being charged to utilize the space. So the fee, the cost of that is going to go back on our, our partners. It's also connecting with other groups like the city, you know, whether or not their parks and rec program would have any interest in utilizing it. The issue that we have is that we are limited in the amount of time that we can utilize it. So we're not going to be able to add in a ton of programming. It really is looking at where are we going to increase the costs and who's going to be taking those on. So it would be, you know, like the storm, like I said before, we can come up with about all like 50,000 dollars with what we currently have. That additional 15,000 is going to go back on our, our partners that would be renting that space. So we, I'm, I'm certainly open to meeting with them and discussing some of that and, and bringing more information back. For me, I just, we, I need direction on are we going to continue to move forward with this and I can continue to research that and bring numbers back? I'm, I'm comfortable doing that.
I, I would say yes and yes.
Yes.
But with the clear understanding that this is the number we have to have, whether it's affordable to whoever, I mean, we have to get to this number, minimum. whether it's affordable to whoever, I mean, we have to get to this number, minimum. And there's no way we can do that.
But we also need to do the repairs.
And that's the other, that's the other.
So I was going to mention that, so like, so we had, so you had said, you know, let's take this off and then find 75. If it moves to Community Ed, you don't need to find the other 75. It's coming out of O1 now and going into O4. So you're covered there. It's the long-term maintenance piece that the district is still going to have to find a way to take because I don't, I don't have a fund balance to be able to cover that kind of repair costs. And, and if we did, it would completely deplete what we've built over the last three, four years since COVID. So that, that's the piece the district really needs to consider as well.
So just to restate or clarify, it's even if the 75 wasn't found or met, it's, I mean, we're looking at, the, the repair cost for the Twin Oaks pool in the near future is.
It deprioritizes other factors that we have prioritized already.
Okay, because we haven't got the art.
Okay. But there was $300,000 already budgeted for this year and I understand we could use that money for something else. I understand that, but.
Director Powers, you estimated, I mean, I wrote it down, so correct me if I'm wrong, $695,000.
Right now, that's right now.
I think it would be helpful to understand if, you know, if that six, you know, if we can get someone to really.
It would take more than one vendor.
Sure.
Because only a portion of that is, is the actual swimming pool decking itself. We're looking at the HVAC system, we're looking at, I mean, there's several different pieces to that. And I can get estimates for all of those things. But I, I still look at that as a secondary thing. How I allocate the LTFM, however we move that money around, like I mentioned, it could be $150,000, it could be a million. The operating cost of the pool itself isn't, I mean, $75,000 isn't a huge number, but it's, it's a number that we would have to do something else with. So I, I can definitely, we can definitely reallocate almost any of that money and we can find out exactly how much it is. But as I'm looking at it, I mean, we can, we can do all of that over the next five months and still have a decision made tonight, you know, if the pool's, you could say the pool's going to be closed. And I could say, okay, that gives me five months to come up with an alternative plan, whether it's working with Joel or any of those things along the line. And then at that point, we look at, okay, if we're keeping the pool because someone else is taking up that extra cost, we'll find the LTFM one. So that's, that just is how it fits in with that. You know, it's, I can go with either one of them. I, I'm, I'm here to be the advocate for the buildings. And you guys use me and my knowledge the best you need to. And I will do that.
Is it the will of the board to move ahead? The idea that we're probably going to have to close it? But if there's a magic pill somewhere that somebody uncovers, then the administration is always, has the right to come back and say, wait a minute, but I don't, I don't see it out there. But I, I guess it's, it would be, I guess it would be a gesture of goodwill to talk to the Storm and, and see what they're either willing to do or not to do. But it's not just, again, the $75,000 that we've been talking about. It's the other three quarters of a million dollars that we have to account for and prioritize over and above something else if we're going to keep it open. And that's, that's the chunk that I don't know how we, how we get to. So is it being the will? I don't, I don't know what else we can do.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think just doing some due diligence. Hopefully, it's not a huge effort and I think it's worth some conversations.
Dan, I think you've got to do the due diligence anyways because we're, we can't cover all the maintenance costs we have. We can only cover half of them. So no matter what, you have to do that anyway.
Every time a project is, is found.
Right.
I get an estimate for it.
And then we not only have the $75,000 this year, we would have it every.
Every single year.
Every single year. And, and we're not going, and, and that's only if raising the prices still attracts the number of Community Ed users and stuff like that. I mean, it's, it's kind of a spiral effect. That's what I'm seeing.
It's just ever increasing costs.
Right.
And that's normal. We run into that for everything we do.
I'm comfortable assuming, and I hate to do this because it's been a really, a privilege to this community to, to have that space and to be able to enjoy it, but I just don't see long-term how we can, how we can just keep avoiding the inevitable right now. And that's, that's my, that's where I am. So I'm, I'm okay with, I'm not okay with all these cuts, but I mean, we have to do it. So, and that's our responsibility as a board to be responsible to the entire district and particularly focusing on the needs of the students.
I guess, well, I don't know if you want to go around, but if, if, for me, I think understanding that our, the programming for the, the district and Community Ed is able to be done at one pool and also given all of the other information, I don't feel like there's a choice. I feel like we need to move forward as, as presented.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to explore the idea of moving it to Community Ed and the reason, and many reasons why. I mean, we're a late community. We don't, as a community, I've been challenged with this since the minute we moved here. We don't have a community center. So in my mind, it would make a lot of sense to move it to Community Ed because perhaps there's an opportunity there to partner with the city, become more of a community center. I mean, I don't know even what that looks like, but I, if, if that means that, I, I don't know. What are we trying to say? Yes, move forward with the $75,000 and it moves to Community Ed? I'm like, I'm being, I'm confused about what the ask is. And so I would personally like to see it, because I think there's $75,000 else we can find in this district and I don't want to get into that. But there's things like, you know, administrative iPhone cuts that other districts are doing that is $37,000 if you calculate it correctly. So there's other dollar amounts and I get it's more the LTFM. But when we're talking programs and those type of things, and we've made a lot of cuts to teachers and programs already. And so in my mind, I am really challenged when we are impacting programs, not only just to our students, but also that impact our community. And so I would, I would like to see it explored with, I think it makes a ton of sense to have it under Community Ed and have it be, that's a Community Ed pool and this is a school.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that, Director Atkinson, that if that's an option, that would be great to be able to do. I, I, I think we have, what we'll continue to explore more, but we've reached a, a point where our covering that expense is going to be very challenging. And to your point about iPhones, that's not our cost here. I, I flipped into that as well. We have some savings, but not to the tune of $37,000 if I remove iPhones, but.
Well, my other concern is we, we did redo the locker rooms in 2008 in Twin Oaks. So we've already invested into that building.
Yep.
And so I, I go back to is this poor planning in the, on, in somebody's previous role and now we're here, sitting here trying to clean up a mess. I would like to see it explored with moving it to Community Ed.
And we will, we, and, and we will, my offer, Board, is to continue, as we've stated, to continue to explore what viable options exist within that avenue of doing that. And I would also say that would have, could have, should haves will be our greatest enemy of our own learning. Like, what, what brought us here today, brought us here today. And, you know, we are looking at what we can do moving forward. So we will, we'll make that effort. And if there's anything that we learned, certainly bring that back to the board.
And I would just say that it's almost disingenuous. If, if this, if this line item had come to us tonight and said $750,000, which is what it really is, it would have been scratched three months ago. I mean, we would have said, yep, that's a no-brainer. Because that's the real cost. It's not $75,000. So that's, I think, how we have to look at this.
Right.
Because we can't keep it open and then not do it.
Right.
But that's a part of our general fund budget, right? So like, that, that's, I think that's a little disingenuous to say because there's a lot of other things in the LTFM that are really optional.
District-wide, that, that we have, it would, it would immediately become priority one to do those. We couldn't kick it down, couldn't kick the can down the road anymore. And, and so the question is, is it priority one to put a school district, keep this pool open and fix everything that's wrong? Because that's what it's going to take.
I don't disagree with that. I think there's a lot of other things on like the 26, 27 LTFM that are also very optional, right? Like, we could replace, prioritize this over, right? And correct me if I'm wrong, there's tennis courts, there's tracks, everything's on here. So, but again, it's just a matter of prioritizing the LTFM. For me, that's separate than the general fund discussion in our budget, right?
I don't hear you. I'm a little challenged with something I heard at the very beginning of this presentation about replacing light bulbs to LED because we won some award last year for being like the most efficient district for energy use. And so to me, that's like a waste of resources going in and replacing LED lights when we run efficiently electrically. So who's prioritizing these LTFM cuts? Or, you know what I mean, the LTFM needs, you know what I mean?
Well, it's interesting you bring up, but I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
No, 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 I'm just, that's where I'm challenged because I agree that, I agree if it was $750,000, it should have been on here listed as $750,000. Because I think this $75,000 is misleading to what it really costs to operate that pool, you know, so.
State your potential of.
Yes, yes, and, yes.
Our director, our director, Jason?
I'd, unless Community Ed can show it, I'm good with sticking to what we have here.
Mason?
Yeah, I mean, again, I just feel like we could do a little bit more due diligence to feel comfortable with the decision.
I think that's been offered.
So that's my preference.
Your own stand?
All of it stinks. I'm, I'm fine moving forward.
Okay. So then, session regarding anything else that was presented tonight that we haven't discussed?